Thank you, Senator.
Thanks, Judge.
All right. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our evening City Commission meeting. Hopefully, you have agenda in front of you, and you can follow along with the proceedings tonight. As I call this meeting to order, I'm going to ask you to join me for a moment of silence before we go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we will have roll call.
Commissioner Repart.
Here.
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Commissioner Lanier.
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes.
All right, next up, we'll take us to our first opportunity for public comment tonight. And if you are new to our meetings, I'll kind of walk you through the agenda. We have a couple of opportunities for public comment. The very first one is public comment on action items that we took up earlier today. So they're agenda items. So on your commission agenda, you'll see a whole host of issues that the commission talked about earlier today with some of our, in some of our earlier meetings. So if you are here to speak on one of those items, I'm going to open up that opportunity for public comment momentarily. And then we have a scheduled public hearing tonight. So if you are here to be heard, to speak on subjects, oh, let's see, where am I? Oh, it's a special assessment nuisance role. So if you are here to speak for a special assessment nuisance role, 8744, I'm going to ask you to stay put until I open up that opportunity for public comment. And then at the end of the meeting, you'll be able to come up and speak about anything else that is on your mind, that is not on the agenda, or not part of the nuisance role. So I'll open up this first opportunity for public comment. A couple of rules for public comment. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in. We'll give you up to three minutes to speak. You can look at the timer right here. Yes, Mr. Davis, I see that. Thank you for reminding me. We ask that you put your name over there on a clipboard, and that's really just for recording purposes. And then for the first public comment period...
And Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Miller. Oh, there's no clipboard. Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Miller, for telling us. The clerk will get on that right away. Thank you. So for the, and welcome back. We haven't seen you in a while. And so the first opportunity, where you're talking about something that we voted on earlier, we just asked that you let us know which item you're talking about. So if it's under Appointments Committee, you can say Appointments Committee, Item 2. If it's under Committee of the Whole, you can point to that item, just so we can follow along. So we'll go, you can sign your name on the clipboard once it's over there. But I'll go ahead and open up the first opportunity for public comment. So, Mr. Miller, were you coming up to speak?
He was.
Okay, come on up.
Good evening, fellow citizens and veterans. This is the House of the People. Watchdog Miller reporting. 9C5, that's the GRF freeway. You want 360 grand. That's going to kill, further kills city bus service. It's unfair competition. Another congressman involved who doesn't have an express name, that Rossinkowski, weighs and means velocity, when he had the opportunity to widen Kennedy in Chicago, he said, "No, no more lanes." Auxiliary lane, maybe, but no more traffic lanes, to save the CTA and Northwestern Service in that corridor. So this should be reexamined. Number two, D2, 9D2, how many houses are involved? I thought at one time I heard 4,000, maybe 400. It's an awful lot of houses. The county has totally disowned this program, the former program, and how many houses are involved? That's D2. Third, $2 million for compost. It's, you know, it's a lot of compost. We need money for other things around the city. That's nine. Moving ahead or back. 7-1, you have an appointee or actually a resignation. T-H-E-I-R, "I went to school forever under nuns." Francisco and never told us what their, what is that all about? Excellent way to hide, to conceal all these sexist feminists, sexist supremacists you're packing on these boards and kindly put down his or her. And you have prior commission resolutions on that. You're supposed to be breaking down by gender. 9A2, again, to Neil Harkness, to Dashboard, you call it a mobile GR. Basically, they're in business to demobilize us with their policies. But what are her programs and qualifications? Why is she being appointed? Down to baby-wearing, B7, 9B7, what's that? They need to run bingo? Or what? Why are they being elevated, ascending to becoming a full-blown civic organization? Next, on Sixth Street, I can't quite place it. There's a Sixth Street Hall in there, a very fine Polish hall across the street. And 12,000 bucks doesn't seem to be very, very much money. D4, no backsliding, please, on the pothead profiteering. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And the clipboard's there now. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on items that we're voting on tonight? Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Ladonna Norman, and I want to bring, what is it? Sorry. The State Land Bank and the resolution for the State Land Bank for Affordable Housing. My concern with that is, we really haven't tackled what actually affordable housing is. And right now, we need some prevention in there. This sounds good, but this is not something that's going to happen right away. People are calling the city of Grand Rapids. They are calling fair housing. I just don't understand how this is going to work and how we're going to trust you when all the greed does is recycle here. You have the Kent County Land Bank. You sold half of Grand Rapids. Now you want to assure us that with the State Land Bank, that something good is going to come out of that. I have a problem with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Norman. All right, others who wish to be heard on items that we're voting on? Yep, come on up.
My name's Martha Cooper, Grand Rapids, Michigan. So I didn't get a chance to look up the agenda, but I did a real quick one, as soon as my friend here, who's been asking for affordable housing, along with me for the last couple of years. And so I wanted to point out that we still, the citizens, really don't know what happened with the land bank. And it was pretty weird how it all happened, with it shutting down just before Christmas, and with what was going on that I understood, with our commissioner resigning to run it, and then suddenly, all of these properties are showing, and virtually, they called them manufactured homes, but they looked like motor. Anyway, I know I'm running out of time. So the thing is, is we don't really know what happened to the properties or the money, never mind who's running the thing. We don't care if anybody goes to jail. What I'd like is the money to put into some affordable housing, where elderly and under 30% of AMI. AMI has inflated. I've spoken that to you for a long time because of our income inequality with the medical. There's not enough jobs to call a lot of people middle-class, and you said affordable, 80%, which is $32,000. And there are a lot of two people out here in this audience that can't even listen to stuff that we're being presented about the business districts, because they're so concerned about their neighborhoods being intact and their taxes not raising. Okay? We're at the tail end of what we can stand. I'm going to be having my teeth out before you all do anything, and I don't want to come up here like that. So I'm going to ask you for something that works and has been proven to work, and I hope that people in the audience will look it up. It's called a land trust. Four weeks ago, at one of these meetings, the head of, Mr. Veruis from ICCF, asked you to put 140 homes they got back from a developer into a land trust, so they'd be permanently affordable, not for five years, until they revert to what you all are calling fair market. But it's not fair when State of Michigan doesn't have any rent control, and they can raise it $200 or $300. That's nothing about fair. That's pushing people out. It's harming lives, and you're doing it where you're pushing black people out of formerly red-lined areas and putting in nothing, nothing, so there's no competition, so any landlord can raise it $200 or $300 and get it. Because if you have to move, no other places are going to be that cheap. This is in just, the last time I was here, you had five, six seconds I got to tell you that those five houses that you plan to sell after the city pays to fix them up out of the land bank should also go into the land trust, and I will finish my damn sentence.
Martha, your time's up. Martha, your time's up. Thanks. Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to be heard on items that we're voting on tonight? All right, seeing none, I'm going to, sorry, are you going to speak?
I apologize, Mary. Is this the time for comment on special assessment nuisance?
No, I'm going to open that up in a little bit.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you. So yeah, if you're here to speak on the nuisance role, I ask you just to stay put, and I'll open up that public hearing in just a little bit, after we get through a number of items. All right, so next, that will take us back to approval of the minutes. And these are minutes from our last meeting, which occurred on September 24th. Can I get a motion?
Support.
All right, Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, next up, we'll take us to petitions and communications.
Just one this evening, a communication from Vanessa Eddy regarding the resignation from the Southbound Corridor, and proven authority.
That is referred to Committee on Appointments. And then next, that will take us to reports of city officers.
The first one's a Comptroller's Report for the period of September 12, 2019, through September 25, 2019, in the amount of $27,604,404.62.
That is received and filed.
And the second one is Treasurer's Report for the period of September 7, 2019, through September 20, 2019.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next up, we'll take us to our consent agenda and reports from our committee meetings. So these are items that we talked about earlier today in one of our committee meetings, and where the vote was unanimous. So tonight, with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. But I believe my colleague wants to remove one item from consent.
I do. So I move to approve excluding D2.
Support.
All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda with pulling off D2, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, that will take us to the items removed from consent, and that is the resolution amending the City Commission policy for, did I get that right?
Mm-mm.
The, no, I'm sorry.
There was nothing there.
D2, I read the wrong one.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. The resolution authorizing an agreement with the State Land Bank Authority for land banking services. Can I get a motion?
So move.
Support.
All right, so we talked about this item earlier today at Committee of the Whole at length, but it's a really important item. And so my colleague on the commission, Commissioner Lanier, asked us to take it off so we could have a conversation about it tonight. So I'll turn to you first, and then I'll see if Mr. DeLong wants to add anything.
Absolutely, Mayor. So I think, you know, what we had talked about earlier was to try and have as many housing discussions as possible in the evening, because we frequently have housing advocates, which we've just seen in our public comment period, coming and wanting to know what it is that we're doing. And so I thought that it would be a good time to pull this contract and talk a little bit more in-depth about what it is that we're doing with the State Land Bank. And City Manager, if you don't mind, it would be great to kind of have some closure about the Kent County Land Bank, too. You know, just a brief blurb about the closure of that, because I think we've had that discussion, but it was held at 9:30, and it's probably would be a good time, since that came up during public comment, too.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Repart, who serves on our land bank, the Kent County Land Bank, as it winds down, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, sure. And I, unfortunately, Ms. Cooper has left, I think. But, you know, the Kent County Commission, Board of Commissions voted to shut down the land bank. That was a decision that then we had to reel from. And shortly after that, I was appointed to serve on the board. And where are the properties going to go, where the monies go, those are fair questions to ask. The money, there was, there's not a lot of money in the land bank. They are wrapping up a few projects, and those will be completed, I believe, by the end of October. And then whatever money's left, if there is any money left, which it's unlikely that there will be, that would go back to the county, not to us. But the properties will go to us, and then we've got this agreement with the land bank that, the State Land Bank, that is going to help us to make that transition a lot more smoothly than if we had to do it on our own. But for the sake of wrapping it up, really, everything Kent County Land Bank related will be buttoned up by the end of this month. They're finishing up about 10 projects around the, around the city, and those will be completed, and then they will close out the books. And, you know, their bylaws and all those things, so that money will get redistributed according to their bylaws. But the properties, and we have great agreements in place, fortunately, that will allow those to stay within the city of Grand Rapids.
And I'll add, for those in the audience that aren't familiar with this topic, the Kent County is a separate elected body, and they have the authority to both create a land bank as well as dissolve one. So they created the land bank. Actually, I see one of our county commissioners in the audience tonight, Commissioner Womack. Thank you for your service. They have the authority to create one, and they did that a number of years ago during the economic downturn, when we had hundreds of properties going into foreclosure and really significant blight in a number of our communities and neighborhoods. And then at the end of last year, after internal assessment of where we are today, they made the decision to dissolve the land bank. And then that triggered, we had 12 months, the county land bank had 12 months to wind down, and since that decision back in December, we have been working really hard to figure out what we're going to do, because at the time, we had over 160 properties in the city under the control of the land bank. So that initiated a conversation that we started with the State Land Bank, to see if we could partner with them to continue to use the tools. So with that history, I'll turn it over to Mr. DeLong.
Thank you. I'll pick up the story there.
Yeah.
So we have used the Kent County Land Bank. They've been a valuable partner and have helped us in the affordable housing mission that we're, that we're working on. And they've, without a land banking, what we determined is without a land banking function, we wouldn't be as effective or able to do the work that we need to do in this, in this important area. And so after we learned of the decision of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, we began looking for alternatives. One of the first alternatives we looked at was whether we could form our own City of Grand Rapids Land Bank, which would have been the preferred alternative, but we're precluded from, by state law, from doing that. And that's, there's one city in the state that can do that, and that is the city of Detroit, and there's a special classification that they have. It has to do with the type of school district that they happen to have within the city. And so we can't do that ourselves. So we needed to find another alternative, and that alternative is to work on an agreement with the Kent, with the State Land Bank, to replicate the services that the Kent County Land Bank was doing for us. And the State Land Bank has been very open and very willing to work with us and work on, I think, an innovative agreement that will help us maintain land banking services in the community. So you might ask, what are land banking services? What important things do they do for us? So things like quiet title. So when a property goes through foreclosure, there may be title issues. The land bank is set up by state law to be able to get a clean title, so that when the property comes back, we can actually, there's a transaction that can happen that will, will provide good title to the new buyer. They can land bank properties and hold them until we can find a way to redevelop them for affordable housing or other, for other uses. They also do maintenance. And so we want to make sure that the homes that are in the land bank, and this is something that Kent County Land Bank did very well, what, they mow the grass, they make sure it's secure, they plow the snow in the wintertime, so the sidewalks are clear and people can walk by. They do all the things that a, that a owner would do to make sure that the property is well-maintained. They, in this agreement, they'll also continue to collaborate with, with the city on redevelopment, so with our brownfield authority and other organs of the city that help to do redevelopment. In this agreement with the State Land Bank, we'll, we have really, I think, flexible agreements between, about how properties can move between the city and the land bank back and forth. And a question was asked this morning, you know, do we have the right to control the use? And the way we would control the use is by, we have basically a right of first refusal. And so if the State Land Bank comes to us and says, "We want to do this, and we don't want that to be done," then we have the option to say, "Oh, well, tell you what, we'll just buy that property, and we'll, we'll just move on." And so there are, I think it's a really good agreement, and I think it will service very well. So the one nuance or difference between how the Kent County Land Bank worked and how the State Land Bank will work is that we will be paying holding costs, or those costs that I talked about for mowing and snow plowing and those kind of activities upfront, and then we'll be reimbursed over time as properties are sold. And in the old, with this county land bank, those costs were all assumed by the Kent County Land Bank, and they were basically, we didn't have to account for them. So we have the dollars available to us in the Property Management Fund for the first year, and in the future, we expect that we'll be using affordable housing, community fund dollars, to help pay those holding costs, and those are estimated at about $70,000 per year. But again, there'll be some reimbursement of those costs as we move forward. The mayor mentioned how many properties the Kent County Land Bank had in, in January of this year. Now, there are about 145, so the number has been whittled down, and to Commissioner Repart's point, I know that they're working to close out other projects. And actually, our, our wind-down process with them has been very, very good. They've been very open, they're very willing to, to help the wind-down go well, and they've been really good partners right up to the end, and we really appreciate that. So when they're done winding up, there'll be properties left over. Those properties will either come to us and then go to the State Land Bank, or we may be able to work at where they just go right from the Kent County Land Bank to the State Land Bank. So they could, could go either way. And then the land, State Land Bank will work with us to administer that property inventory. So we've had a lot of help along the way. Jeff Huntington, the interim director of the State Land Bank, has been exceedingly helpful, and his staff has been very good to work with. Our staff, Amber Beebe, Jonathan Klooster, and many others have worked to help make this happen. I think we're in good shape with this arrangement, and I think this will take what was a very treacherous situation and turn it into a good situation.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. And I'll add, I know some of us, myself, City Manager, Commissioner Jones, went back in March, I believe, to State Land Bank Authority Board, and we really had a great conversation at that time with the members of the board, and then also the staff, and I appreciate them working so closely with us. I will add, this is a separate item, but we also approved today a brownfield plan amendment to work with a number of our nonprofit organizations to also develop some affordable housing. So there's, there's a number of different issues that we're working on around affordable housing, and this is, this is one of actually quite a few.
Mayor, if I might add to the point you made about the brownfield and the five houses, with those five, we're up to 200 or more homes that we've assisted with the brownfield plan.
Yeah.
And those are all affordable homes.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Commissioner?
Just a couple of quick follow-up questions, Eric, and they're mostly questions we've talked about either this morning or other times, and we've talked about the State Land Bank. The Kent County Land Bank would put the homes on the MLS. I know they also work with the local nonprofits. So, you know, if you could speak to whether the state will do the same. And then we had the affordability component, as well as the lead remediation component. That was a recent add-on for the Kent County Land Bank, and if you could speak to whether those are going to be similar. And I think the last one that we've talked about, well, something else that came up as you were speaking, but one of them was someone has come and asked about the auctions. So when we started using the Kent County Land Bank, the option for citizens to go to a public auction to buy their own home went away. And so I know we've talked about why that change was made and the benefits from that. So if you could speak to that. And then I, finally, I know the Kent County Land Bank had a lot of good relationships with local vendors for their maintenance, and so I'm curious to know if we're kind of transferring some of that information. Commissioner Repart, as you guys are dissolving the Kent County Land Bank over to the state, so they can already know, kind of, you know, local first is a priority for us, too, as they're looking for vendors, I'm assuming, to, to do maintenance.
Well, so some things are going to change as we, as we move forward, and, you know, so the contractual relationships really are up to them. We can provide them with advice. They have a contract for maintenance already.
Okay.
That they're using around the state. And I think initially, at least, they'll be relying on that vendor that they have a proven relationship with to do, do most of that work. In terms of, I'm kind of hopefully going backwards, and I won't forget the last couple of questions.
That's fine.
And you can remind me if I do, please. So in terms of the auction, actually, the, the way that we're doing the foreclosures were to assure that homes found their way to not-for-profits for affordable redevelopment. And so, because before, there was, it was kind of spotty, you know, it didn't always happen. A lot of auctions, it can work out really well for a community, or they can work out really badly. And so we decided to, to intervene and to have, use the land bank as the repository for homes until we could put them into good use. So this does not intend to, to rekindle the auction.
Okay.
So I imagine that properties could potentially be put on the MLS at some point in time, but, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to presuppose that. So then, moving on to, to talk to you about affordable housing, so on affordable housing persons. So what am I missing from your questions?
Lead.
Lead, okay. So, well, part of what the five homes were about in the use of the brownfield is about lead remediation. And so that's a part of every, I think it would be a part of every project that we do.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Did I miss anything?
None. No. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will add, and Commissioner, I likely still have this in one of my files. You know, I was around this table when we decided to move forward with, with moving away from the auction, and we had a lot of really good data that showed that, one, the auction, you had to have cash on hand. It was sight unseen, so you didn't have an opportunity to walk through the property. And so a lot of properties were purchased with cash, and then the buyer would see them and see that they were in, in pretty poor condition, and they would sit on the rolls for another three years and then go back. So we had really good data about how many properties came back through the, through the auction process because of foreclosure, and then they would sit blighted in a community for three, six, nine years. And so we had good data on that. And then we also had really good data on the number of code violations. So we were able to identify all of the, I think we went back seven years, if I recall, and we were able to identify the hundreds of houses that went through the auction, and then we were able to pull, I believe, this is from memory, it's a long time ago, but I believe it was over 4,000 code violations on that batch of properties. And so we were able to really clearly show the negative impact on community with how that process was occurring and the lack of accountability. And we used that data when we were challenged with making that decision to pull the properties for public purpose. But that, that history, since some of you weren't around the table when we decided it, some of that history would likely be helpful.
Yeah, and I know that with the method that the Kent County Land Bank started to use, home ownership became more of a priority than the increase in rental, or rental units, I should say. So that was, I think, another component that fared well for not having the auction.
So they, that, you're absolutely right. Home ownership was a priority, and for the first, I believe, 20, 21 or 28 days, the properties were really targeted to low-income families.
Families, yeah. Great. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. All right, any other questions or comments? Commissioner?
Yeah, I just want to thank Commissioner Lanier for bringing this up, because I think one of the questions we're getting has to do with how many houses are coming on the market, and to know that over 200 homes were put back on the market through this process is important. We also had a conversation this morning in a presentation by the Housing Commission. That's not an agenda item, but we did talk about, given the fact that people are coming to learn about what the city is doing, that it would be good to put out at least their website information so that people can look that up. We are working with the Housing Commission. It used to be part of the city, and it was taken out of our authority years ago, really because of NIMBYism, not in my backyard. So the federal government intervened and took it out, but we are still partners with them in many respects. So, and at one point, our Community Development Department put out a flyer for people, too, that showed how many houses were coming on board through the Community Development Blot Grant Funds, and I think it's time to perhaps revisit those numbers as well, so that we can have something to hand out to people who come.
One last request, Erica, maybe. Commissioner Repart, you can follow up on this. I think it would be nice to have an overall summary of the impact. I think it would be nice to have an overall summary of the impact of the land bank from the work that they did do over the entirety of their lifespan, I should say. But it would be nice, especially, I know they've done work outside of the city, but specific to the city, it would be nice to have a full summary of the number of houses and projects they worked on, how many went to homeowners, affordable, you know, it'd be nice to have that broken down.
I'll see if I can get it.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, Commissioners, next up will take us to ordinances to be adopted, and we have two ordinances before us tonight, and we'll start with the first one.
First one is an ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2019-19 for fiscal year 2020, Amendment Number 6.
Can I get a motion?
To moves.
Support. All right, Commissioner O'Connor, who is with our fiscal committee, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a lot of good grants received today, one fire department grant here from the Federal Emergency Management and Homeland Security to help with fire prevention and safety. Chief mentioned today that we've received over twelve million dollars in grants over the last ten years from the good work of our grant writing team over there at the fire department, so that's pretty exceptional value for our citizens. We have a COPS grant, 2016, we're just recognizing for two positions, one that works with the Department of Corrections on Female Prisoner Reentry, and another one that helps support a code enforcement officer in our planning or development center. Some metro enforcement team, and auto theft prevention authority grants, a public safety answering grant, and then we have one point three million dollars for our lead hazard chip program, which is great to help with the lead concern that we continue to talk about in our community here. And then just some transfers between funds for both major and local streets, just aligning some dollars from our vital streets fund and some of the other projects we have going on, and we do not use any of our contingent values.
Great. And before I ask our clerk to do a roll call vote, I don't see Chief Lehman in the audience tonight, but I just want to point out, in regards to the first grant for the fire department, I was able to attend a press conference where we notified the community that we have installed over sixty thousand smoke detectors throughout our community with our fire prevention program. And this grant allows us to continue that work. So I just want to give a shout out to our fire department, who are out there through, really throughout our entire city, working to make sure that we're preventing fires and saving lives, so. It's a great grant. All right, with that, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. And can I get a motion to give that immediate effect?
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next up will take us to our second ordinance to be adopted tonight.
It's an ordinance adopting Chapter 105 of Title VII of the City Code entitled Marijuana Related Municipal Licensing.
All right, can I get a motion?
For.
All right, Commissioner Jones, you want to tell us about this?
Yep, Mayor, the ordinance provides for the adoption of Chapter 105 marijuana-related municipal licensing of Title VII, Licensing and Regulation of the Code of the City of Grand Rapids. The State of Michigan will begin accepting license applications for recreational marijuana uses authorized under the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, also known as MRTMA, on November 1st, 2019. A municipality must have an ordinance regulating recreational marijuana uses in effect no later than November 1st, 2019, in order to avoid a default opt-in status while lacking reasonable regulations on marijuana uses. The proposed ordinance before us would require a local license for and allow the operation of all marijuana facilities licensed under the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, also known as MMFLA, and the MRTMA.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? I know we've talked about this at length. This is the license in place, and then it'll give us time to work out the details for the recreational marijuana. All right, this is a roll call vote tonight.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Repart?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. All right, and colleagues, we don't have any resolutions tonight, so that will take us to our scheduled public hearings. So this, we have a public hearing tonight for the special assessment nuisance rule, eight, seven, four, four. So for individuals seeking an appeal, this elected body acts as the review board tonight. So this public hearing is going to be only for those who are asking for an appeal. So we'll start off tonight by giving Ms. Grivens a chance to give us a briefing on this, and then we'll open it up for public comment. And are you going to be in room 901?
901, yes.
Okay. And then if you have additional questions or need additional support, then we'll have staff over in room 901 to help you with that. So, hello, welcome.
Thank you. The city commission is acting as the board to review to hear appeals on charges levied on special assessment nuisance rule number eight, seven, four, four. Charges on the rule are comprised of past due billings during the period from January 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2019. The special assessment rule includes charges for violations related to refuse, weeds, snow removal, inoperable vehicles, blight, rental property certification, housing violations, and other code violations. At the time of the hearing, a necessity held August 13th, there existed seventeen hundred charges totaling four hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Payments made after the hearing on necessity have reduced the total amount of charges to three hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. So property owners were sent notices on August 22nd, notified of the charge and the appeal process. The special assessment rule has been open for public inspection for the last two weeks, starting, for at least two weeks, starting September 9th through today, and the assessor's office has received fifteen appeals to date. So tonight is the final opportunity to file an appeal for these charges. Appeals must be made in writing on forms, and I'll be in room 901, and my deputy city assessor will also be there, Cheryl Koyman, to assist those wishing to file an appeal. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. So if you are here tonight to be heard, and I believe this gentleman up front in the suit, this is what you're here for tonight, so I'll let you go first, and then anyone else, we ask you to come forward. Same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and then put your name over there on the clipboard. So, hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Tim Dudley. I'm here on behalf of Processing Solutions. Processing Solutions owns a parcel of real property on the corner of Ellsworth and Granville. They were assessed following failure to clear snow and ice from the sidewalk along Ellsworth Avenue. I've submitted a cover letter and supporting materials in support of our position. I don't have anything further to add to that, but essentially, the ordinance provides that property owner is responsible for clearing snow and ice from a sidewalk adjoining the parcel, and in this case, the sidewalk does not actually adjoin the parcel. So here, happy to answer any questions if you have any, or else I'll take a seat.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like him to go to room, Mr. Dudley to go over?
He's already filed.
Oh, okay, okay, great, thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close that opportunity for public comment, and that will be referred back to our community development committee. All right, so this will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight, and this is, you can come up and speak about anything other than what we've already talked about tonight, or you can add on to what you said earlier, so you can share anything that's on your heart and mind. Same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak.
I'm so tired of coming in here, talking to y'all. I'm gonna speak as a mom, because I know some of y'all are not mothers and parents tonight, all right? But what a mother goes through for her children, you will never know. I've been up since 6:00 AM. I've taken care of my family, I've went to work, and now I'm trying to take care of my community being here. We have a lot of things going on. You guys, everything sounds good on paper when they come up here and talk about the Kent County Land Bank and the state land bank, but there are some things that are immediate. Like what kind of psychological and mental counseling are these parents receiving from the trauma from being displaced? You guys sit up here and you look at us like you don't even care, like you don't even have a heart. The homelessness has not gotten better here. The children, man, these childrens are a nervous wreck. Some of these parents are sleeping in cars with their kids. But like I said, what parents do is something we do when we have to do it. There's a lot of parents doing what they have to do so they don't have to lose their kids, and there are a lot of parents that just hand their kids over to the state. What are you putting in place now? It's about to be cold in five minutes. Has anybody thought about the warming stations for the homeless? It all sounds good on paper, and I told you I'll still be here when the audience is gone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Notman. All right, others who wish to be heard?
I'm David Davis. I live on the northwest side of Grand Rapids. I've been here many times about the trash on the city streets and so forth. I participated in the Mayor's River cleanup, and since then, I've noticed that some of the areas that were cleaned up have gone back to what they were before and even worse. Again, we have to do something about the people that are doing this to our city, throwing their trash around and that. And it has to do with your own self-esteem that you take care of your place where you live. And I hope that the people of Grand Rapids will do likewise as I do. I clean up as I walk along the sidewalks and streets, and if everybody did just a little bit of cleanup, it would be a great help to keep our city presentable to guests that come to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Never felt too excited to walk up here. I had to say that, I'm sorry. But first of all, I'd like to give a shout out to my Auntie Tanille. I'm very proud of her being appointed to that committee. That's pretty cool. Earlier, I was at the city commission meeting, and I seen that the city was actually about to create an advisory board for affordable housing, or something like that, or something about affordable housing in that you guys were about to start working with like Section 8 homes and things like that. How is, how is it, when will you guys actually start the applications? Will the city be putting that information up there? Because it's a lot of people that talks about affordable housing and people having Section 8 vouchers and wanted to be able to, I've never heard of Section 8, somebody being on Section 8, potentially becoming a homeowner. So I just want to know what's the possibility of people, you know, for the people that weren't there, like what type of, when would that be available? I know everybody's not going to be able to get a seat, but I know that's available, and I know there will be a lot of meetings coming up for that. That's something I'm very passionate about. I'm sure it's a lot of people from Linkup and hearing that a lot, so I just wanted to bring a little bit of awareness to that, that there's about to be something in place where people can actually get some type of affordable housing. And also, please, when you guys are going over the recreational spaces, to please do the designated consumption lounge. I would like to make a coffee bar or something like that, but something classy, you know, because I'm very classy, and I like to show that. I like to show my creativity. That'd be pretty cool, but I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, DeAndre. All right, others who wish to be heard? Hello, Commissioner, welcome. Oh, Mr. Peterson, hi.
Yes, my name is Bill Peterson. I live on Cherry Street. When I have occasion to talk to people from the city, I would like to be able to get a written confirmation of what we talked about. Is that possible?
I would say yes, I believe so.
Okay, and then if I was unable to get that, who would I complain to?
Mr. Peterson, I'm going to have one of my staff members follow up with you. It depends on the nature of the interaction, whether or not there will be a written follow-up. So if you submitted something in writing, we should respond in writing. If you made a call, they don't necessarily have to respond in writing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. It's up to you. Welcome.
Hello, Mayor, good to see you, and the rest of the commission. Just want to thank you for your service and the thankless duties that you do daily. Just letting you know, I recognize all your hard work, and I'm very supportive of what you do. What brings me here today, I'm part of a neighborhood association called Sika Southeast Community Association. It's been here about forty years, and we continue to have meetings. Sometimes when people come to our meetings, they're surprised that so many young people in the neighborhood still come to our meetings. But because of the violence, that's one of the reasons we're here today at one of our last neighborhood meetings, the young men brought up violence and what they could do about it. So we continue to have meetings about stop the violence, and just being two African-American males, here me, an older one, with one of the young guys that represents some of the young guys in our neighborhood, just here to say we know we're endangered species, and we understand that when people on their way home in southeast side of Grand Rapids in O7 where we live, their parents are praying for them just to be able to walk from the store. There's a national news story where there was an African-American U.S. veteran that was shot in the face for forty dollars that they robbed, and that's just been on the news, not in Grand Rapids. But I lost two friends to gun violence in the last month, and as the guy starts saying, what could we do? I said, it's good, because it starts with these young guys. It starts with our community, it starts with us. But I definitely wanted to start bringing them around downtown, letting them know that it's not a blame game, but together we can somehow find a solution to some of the violence I don't know will ever be able to stop at all. But I just want to say, I want to salute those young men in the neighborhood who are making the effort, and I look forward to introducing them to more of you downtown. And just shout out to our law enforcement, they provided some excellent protection at the African-American festival that went peacefully and was great, and I thank the community, because the community came out peacefully. But we just look to partner with as many people as we can so we can save some lives, because living in the O7, when we see it, is not just a number, those are our friends, our nephews, our cousins, our brothers, our sisters. A lot of young women were shot by stray bullets. And once again, we recognize the work that you're doing, and our neighborhood association just wants to partner and help any way we can to stop the violence and save some lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thanks. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard tonight? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close that opportunity for public comment, and I'm going to turn down here to my colleagues. All right, Mr. Miller, I'm going to let you come this time. Next time, I want you to come on up like we've talked about in the past, okay? All right. You'll be the last one.
This is the House of the People, what's up, Miller Beck, reporting, hit Chicago yesterday on some errands, and Chicago sometimes still only costs a buck, whereas our paper only, New York City is a buck fifty. Thirty-two pages of sports in there.
Here, Mr. Miller, go ahead and talk to us.
Thirty-two pages of sports in there, and their philosophy is start people out reading on the sports, the young guys, and they'll get more involved in the rest of the sections as they grow older. Next, I received your, through some slip up, they're sending me your election literature. The last one before this was, in one of your slogans is neighborhoods, what neighborhood bus comes here, you know? And as Commissioner Womack eloquently testified, if you kind of get these bus routes back, black bus routes, one, two, three, four, five, fourteen, the nineteen, Commissioner Womack was flat out stolen from Madison Square. Catholic routes going up Chicago, you get to count the fourteen twice. That would be seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen. The fourteen started out Catholic. Clearly, Marywood Aquinas, Thomas Apostle, Catholic Social Services, Corner Jefferson, and Catholic Information Center. These buses don't come downtown. You also advertise seniors, it's a big block in your, but what programs do you have? I mean, you're still charging seniors, ferries for riding the buses, your neighborhood metros, Ann Arbor, Chicago, and so on, Holland Zeeland, the MAX system, as ferries are free for senior citizens. I don't say kind of I need it in itself, I just think it would be a very good program to give seniors more of a sense of belonging in the bus system. So here in your last literature, I figured out what your solution is. That's you and a canoe there, and your program for getting our buses back is go kayak yourselves, veterans, your buses, city buses are never going to come back. So this is very well put, and then on the other side, you're some very young children, but what position will they be a couple of years from now? If they're in GRPS city buses, those buses are insanely inhumanly overpacked, we need double-dogger buses, build them in the old bus plant in Flint. And then beyond that, the buses will be forced to go to Central Station with your primitive that, the buses will be forced to go to Central Station with your primitive, primitive plumbing, primitive prison plumbing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Appreciate your feedback. All right, so with that, I'm going to close that opportunity for public comment, and I'll turn to my colleagues up here. And I'll start down here with Commissioner Part.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. I'll make sure to get that information about the Kent County Land Bank. And I had another idea as well during the meeting, because I think you're right, Commissioner Lanier, we can tell those stories a bit more publicly about how we're impacting affordable housing.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and to just inform you that we do hear everything that you say. And I want to give kudos out to the 311 crew of the city. They take a lot of information and they receive a lot of calls, and they take a lot of hits on our behalf. And I just want to thank Becky Jo for her staff and what they do, because they've really helped me out over a number of different situations with community people who have had issues. So the city is doing some good stuff, and we don't take it lightly.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
I too want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Drive home safely. It's getting dark. We've got some announcements that we've been making now about watching, being careful when you cross the street because it's dark. And so have a good evening and stay safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, happy to see the turnout on this evening and appreciate those who had words, as well as those who were just present. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Connor?
First, I want to commend my colleague, Commissioner Jones, for his very thoughtful article that he submitted to our local news media here last week concerning violence in our community and the need to end the code of silence. I want to thank Commissioner Womack for coming down tonight and talking about being safe in our community and the fact that we all want to feel safe in our community. And I think it's, many of us saw the news earlier today, which is, is an ongoing investigation where a five-year-old child was, innocent child, was shot three times. It's not acceptable. It's not acceptable for any of us. None of us want to live in a town where any person, let alone a five-year-old child, is subject to, you know, careless violence. And so we need your help. Please help us. Please help us all feel safe in our community. Help us stop this. If you know somebody that's, that's done something wrong, stand up, do the right thing. We need your help. Our, our men and women in law enforcement, you know, they're out there every day trying to solve these crimes, but we need you to, you as the community in Grand Rapids, to, to be a partner in that with us. And, you know, we'll continue to, to do the best we can to, to be, to carry out the job of being a police officer. Sometimes it's not perfect, but I know that they care. They care about the community. They want to, they want to solve these crimes, but they can't do it on their own.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanier?
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out and for the comments that were made this evening. DeAndre, I'm hoping that if you're still in the room and that someone from staff connected with you to clarify some of what I think you heard earlier today about that Housing Committee, because I don't think, I think we need to clarify that a little bit more. And thank you, Commissioner Womack. I was hoping that the young gentleman was going to speak too. But thank you both for coming out and, and sharing about the concern that you have. As, as my colleague, Commissioner O'Connor, just mentioned, it's something that's, the violence that's happening in the community is heavily on our minds. I, you know, I thank the city manager for making sure that every time there is an incident, that he's reminding us of the data so that we know that we still are in a safe community. But at the same time, when a five-year-old is getting shot, that's a huge concern that we all should be alerted to in wanting to do the best that we can to try and resolve some of the violent acts that are happening in our community. So thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner. City Clerk?
Just to bring everybody up to speed on the election process, that less than a month away. So reminding the voter, citizens and voters out there that November 5 is Election Day. But you, anybody, for any reason, getting absentee ballot, we've already mailed out 16,082 ballots, and we've received 3,437 of them back. So if you have an absentee ballot, please return it. Just having a ballot does not cast a ballot. So please make sure you get that in. And if you want to know more about the ballot and see a sample ballot, you can go to mi.gov/vote, and you can see your ballot and get all your information.
Thank you. Thank you for that reminder. And City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for your work tonight. Thank the public for coming out, as well as the staff for their work in preparing all the items for both Commission deliberation, public comment. I want to also echo comments earlier about community engagement around policing and make sure that we have a safe community. And echo what we said earlier about those who want to report, but perhaps you're afraid of retaliation from someone in the community, or whatever your perception is about law enforcement. There is a way to do it anonymously, and that is through silent observer. And we would invite you to share any information that you have about any criminal act. It's not right to remain silent. The number is 616-774-2345 for silent observer. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And I'll end with a couple shout-outs. First, going to our chief. I want to thank our police chief. I was able to spend some time with him yesterday and again today. And I know that he cares just as deeply and is just as concerned. And I know has an open-door policy. So if you are in the community and you want to connect directly with him, I know that he's willing to do that. And in his leadership with the department and partnership with our law enforcement, he's doing a lot of great work in the community to build relationships, which we know is key to getting to, making sure that people feel safe reporting. So Chief, thank you for your work and your leadership. Appreciate that. And then earlier today, we were able to celebrate a couple other departments who received some national awards and recognition. So I see our treasure here in the, in the front. Mr. John Golbinski, congratulations again for that incredible award. And I know that there was a big team behind you that helped make that happen. And I want to give a shout out to Becky Jo Glover in 311. And I know Commissioner Moody already talked about 311. But a lot of what we were recognized for this morning with those two awards, her team was instrumental, instrumental in making it happen. So thank you both for your service. Congratulations again on those honors. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a good night.